Hello again, Board members and Mr. Supervisor again, Robert Ritt. For those who don't know me. Today, I want to bring my concerns of lack of transparency in the government here in the Town of Voice debates to your attention. Before I do, I just have a question in regards to Mr. Friar's question in your response.
Friar?
Friar, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. I was able to read a little bit of these contracts with Singh and, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there some sort of, like, agreement or penalty that if, I'm not sure whether either side, but if the contract was to be settled or terminated, aren't there some payment that the town would have to give to Mr. Singh? I'm not sure whether it's Mr. Singh was to terminate or whether the town was to terminate, but I just got the impression that it just wasn't a contract that the town could say, "Well, we want to walk away from you now and drop the ball and that's it." Is that true enough?
We'll find out for you, Rob.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so today, I just wanted to, actually, before I get into my concerns I like to raise this week, I did raise some questions at the last town meeting on May 26. I'm still waiting for the documents that you promised me from Mr. Sabellico as far as the, what he forwarded to District Attorney's office. I've asked you numerous times, I'm pretty much just going to go with the, as far as I'm concerned, you don't want to, you don't want to provide them to me.
No, 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 don't be that way. You make your statement, remember we discussed this last time, you make your statement and in the end we'll answer any questions you raised and we'll make any comments that may be appropriate.
All right, so I'm just asking you again about that then. I had also asked you, actually, I am going to do my statement, I just want to get last questions, meetings, last meeting's questions out of the way. At the last couple of meetings, I've asked you when the last, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Just give me a second here. I'm sorry. Yeah, but the way we're going to do this though, we're not going to continue, we're not going to continue the debate format any longer. This is a public comment period where the resident is going to, as Mr. Friar did and as others will do, going to make his statement. Any questions that were raised, we'll provide answers to if we can, and any comments that we deem appropriate, we'll make when he completes his statement. I'm sorry, Rob.
That's quite all right. So, just sort of on the same page, I'm just, again, before I get to my statement, I'm just following up on past questions from the last meeting. I'd ask you-
I think the first question, just for clear, was documents forwarded to the District Attorney's office by our Town Attorney?
No.
Oh, I got it wrong.
No, we got that straight, John. You had ensured me at the last meeting that Mr. Sabellico was going to forward me the documents that he did forward to the District Attorney. It's been, it's been four weeks I haven't received them.
I thought he was going to identify them. Okay, so he'll, let's, you complete your statement and we'll get to that.
Okay. I also asked you three or four meetings in a row when the Town of Voice Debate's Ethic Board last met. Do you have a response for that?
No, I know, I believe they met recently, but I don't know exactly when.
Okay. I had also brought to your attention in prior meeting that I had attempted to contact, actually, I received some contact from Mr. Nagy, the chairperson of the town's Ethics Board, and I had replied to him and I had never received a reply from him. I actually sent my correspondence to the town clerk's office. Did you find out if Mr. Nagy's ever going to reply to me?
I don't really want to tamper with the work of the Ethics Board. You want us to relay a message to him that you're-
No, I, I already sent him a letter, it's self-explanatory. I had asked you at the last meeting if the Ethics Board replied to me, you told me you were going to look into it.
Well, we'll let, I'm really not recalling that, but we'll let the Ethics Board handle it if they have a correspondence from you, they'll do what they think is appropriate. We don't tell them what to do.
Okay. I had asked you, brought to your attention rather than this meeting, that I hadn't received Commissioner Belido's financial statement, which I was promised by Mr. Nagy, and I've actually done a FOIL request for. Did you have any answer to that?
No, no, I don't. You let Mr. Nagy tell you he would provide it?
Yeah, I have it in writing.
Okay. I tell you what we'll do, we'll direct this dialogue to, at least direct it to the chairman of the board, right, to John? Okay.
Okay. The last bit of information from the last meeting is, I asked you if you recall your involvement with the Clean Start Task Force. Did you recollect any of that?
Whoa. No. No, the Clean Start, my involvement with the Clean Start Task Force?
Right, I explained that back in 210, 211, the county executive had asked for proposals to revitalize the Nassau Coliseum area.
I didn't, I didn't know that was called the Clean Start.
Yeah, they named it the Clean Start Task Force.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
No, I think I answered as best as I could at the time. As I recall, a meeting was held, I believe all of the towns were represented at the meeting. The general topic of discussion was the development of the so-called hub, you know, where the islanders play and over in the town of Hempstead. And I think there was just dialogue about the future of it and it really kind of evaporated. I think after that came the vote.
Well, there was actually a $345 million proposal, there were plans drawn up by Angelo Corva, who I'm sure you know Angelo, the architect.
Yeah, no, I'm not as-
There was a proposal made on that and my interest in it is, quite frankly, the Long Island Business Association, who publishes a monthly periodical, had listed you as participating as the Town of Voice Debate Supervisor, but they also listed Commissioner Belido participating, but not as the Town of Voice Debate Supervisor, just as an expert in planning and development. So, I'm just curious myself, I'd like to know, I understand that you were representing the town there, I'd like to know who the commissioner was representing.
Okay, well, you finish your statement and I'll, I'll address it.
Okay.
I started to address it, but you cut me off, that's why-
Oh, I apologize.
That's why I want to do a break before that. So, you finish your statement and I'll respond.
Okay, so, today I-
I'd like to see all that Clean Start?
Clean Start Task Force?
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so today I just wanted to touch on the lack of, what I perceive to be the lack of transparency in our government here. You know, back at the last meeting on May 26, you did implement or explain that you wanted to change, I don't want to say the format, but the way things were going on in these meetings in a question and answer type situation and you prefer to hear statements, right? In my own personal opinion, I don't, I don't see that happening. The reason that, the reason that I'm actually up here speaking is because I repeatedly tried to contact you in writing and through email and to explain to you what my concerns were. And I was, and I'm speaking about the whole town board, and I was repeatedly ignored by all of you. And basically, it wasn't until I came up here and I started addressing you publicly on the record that I was actually even detained. I believe that as elected officials, you all have an obligation to answer questions relating to your duties to the best of your ability whenever they're asked. I don't think you're supposed to be removed from the public, and I'd like to bring to your attention that, Mr. Vendetta, you don't even have an email address that the residents can contact you at. You did, and I was able to send you a few documents on it, but evidently it's disabled. I'd like to move on to the Ethics Board. I strongly believe that the Ethics Board is non-existent by your design. You purposely placed three town officials on the board, you've had no meetings, there are no ethic rules enforcement in the Town of Voice Debate. I don't understand why anyone would believe that they even reviewed anyone's financial statements. I personally have made multiple requests at Ethics Board investigations throughout my experience with the town directly to the supervisor, the town attorney, and all the board members through email and through US mail. All those requests were ignored. I'm now calling for a full disbandment of the current Ethics Board and I call for a public meeting in which the town and the residents it represents can agree on how our Ethics Board should be chosen and operate. I'd like to move on to the town's lack of transparency in your Freedom of Information Office.
Robert, how much more time do you have to go, do you think?
About five minutes, John.
I'm going to hold you to that.
All right. I'd, I'm sorry, but are you putting timeframes on?
No, you just represented you need another five minutes, I'm just going to hold you there. You have, you just said it'll be five more minutes.
Yeah, it should be about five minutes.
So, go ahead.
Approximately. All right. I'd just like to read a letter that I recently sent to the Foil Appeals Office on June 18th. "Your office is seriously delinquent in the following FOIL requests I have made. You cannot extend the amount of time you claim to need for, to respond forever. You also failed to even respond to some of the initial requests. Nothing prevents you from releasing partial replies. I hereby appeal from the Town of Voice Debate's denial of the following FOIL request numbers: Number 25055, 25056, 25057, 25058, 25029, 25064, 25060, 22799, 25065, 25067, and 25068. All these requests for public information, there's no reason that any of them should be denied or withheld, and when the appeal is over, I will be following a order of show clause for an audible 78. And as far as I'm concerned, you're just costing the taxpayers needless money. You're withholding information for no reason, except for the fact that it might substantiate further misconduct by town employees."
Okay, good.
There was something that you said in the last meeting that I do agree with 100%. You explained that if any act of misconduct or possible criminal activity was brought to your attention, you would have an obligation to act on it, to take action. So, I'd like you to take, please pay attention because I am bringing some allegations of misconduct and possible criminal behavior to your attention right now. The Massapequa South Republican Club is listed as being led by Len Janot, the Deputy Town Supervisor and the Town Attorney. The address provided for the Massapequa South Republican Club and the financial disclosures provided by the Friends of John Vendetta show the Massapequa South Republican Club is located 18 Tidewater Avenue, Massapequa, New York, which is the residence of Maureen Fitzgerald, the Town of Voice Debate Commissioner of Community Services you just mentioned. Okay? I substantiated to the New York State Board of Elections and the Nassau County Board of Elections that the Massapequa South Republican Club is an unregistered political club, which in itself is not illegal. However, it is illegal for an unregistered political club or committee to make contributions or engagements, transactions over $1,000. It is also illegal for a registered political committee or club to accept transactions from an unregistered political club in the amounts of over $1,000. A report prepared for the New York State Board of Elections by the Citizens Union of New York City disclosed that in 2013, the Massapequa South Republican Club was the 18th largest contributor of campaign donations made by an unregistered political club. In fact, since 2011, the Massapequa South Republican Club has donated $30,700 to the Friends of John Vendetto. The Friends of John Vendetto Schedule F substantiated this. I've reported this behavior to the New York State Board of Elections Enforcement. I believe that not only do you have an obligation to report it, also if you substantiate yourself, which I did, not only through investigations on the computer, but actual phone calls to the Enforcement Division of the New York State Board of Elections. And I believe that you have an obligation to return the $30,700 that you received in unlawful contributions from this club. I'd also like to bring up that during the May 26 town meeting, without any discussion, the town passed a resolution to pay $50,000 a year with a possible two-year extension to a law firm to act as counsel to the Town Board and Ethics Board because of the information that I've brought to the attention of the town, among other people. All right? During that meeting, you explained that you weren't going to actually engage in any debates or answer any questions and that we were going to use this format, which is fine, I have no problem with that.
I just have to interrupt you on a point of information. I didn't say we wouldn't answer any questions, I said we would engage in debate format, that's all. Like, I wouldn't be interrupting you, you would be interrupting me. You make your statement, I'll answer any questions that we can answer and make any other comments that we deem appropriate. No one said we wouldn't answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right. At the last meeting I attended, you had me sit down and you berated me and you attacked me for bringing the information that I brought to your attention. Okay, for bringing the, first you sat here and you approved the resolution to hire a law firm to review your non-existent Ethics Board, and then you attacked me for bringing that to light. I just want to say, thank you. Because that is the greatest compliment that a politician could pay anyone. I just have two questions going into next meeting if you don't mind.
Sure.
I'd like to know Richard Porcelli, P-O-R-C-E-L-L-I, his address is 1826 Lewis Kosoff Avenue, I believe that is in Rockonkama. I understand that there's a Mr. Porcelli that's employed by the Town of Voice Debate as an assistant to the Department of Public Works, but I'd like to know Richard Porcelli Senior, I'd like to know if he's employed by the town, I'd like to know if he receives any type of benefits from the town, a vehicle, anything. And I, do you know him, Mr. Vendetta?
Very well.
Okay. And I'm just curious, the Friends of John Vendetto have been paying him $1,000 a month for a storage since 2013, do you have any, can you tell me what you store there?
Have I told you to finish it?
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry. All right, you're right, I'm sorry, I apologize, John, I, I'm old habits die hard, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The last question I have is in relation to the Syossett landfill. Okay? I believe this is the property that was sold to, you don't have to answer the question, I'm just playing it out there. I understand that this is the property, the landfill that was sold to the Syossett Park LLC. My question is, I understand that the Syossett landfill, excuse me, I understand that they were a superfund site, in fact, the New York State EPA has a very, very nice webpage that that reads, "Through innovative planning and creative partnership, the Syossett landfill superfund site provides valuable municipal amenities and serves as an excellent example of energy conservation in action. Coordination between the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the Town of Voice Debate has led to the successful cleanup and green transformation of the site, which is now home to a new state-of-the-art compressed natural gas fueling station for use by the town's fleet of vehicles." Now, I understand that in 2009, Town of Voice Debate got a grant to build that state-of-the-art compressed gas fueling station. I understand that the landfill captures methane fuel and that's what's transformed into usable fuel. I understand that it saved the town 275,000s of fuel a year, 270, excuse me, 275,000 gallons of fuel a year, which probably translates to close to three quarters of a million dollars. Now, what I'd like to know is, is this part of the property that was sold and is it, is it still being used by the town? And does the town actually lease it back now from Syossett Park LLC, whoever it was sold to? And ultimately, is the town going to lose this fuel source if this, eventually with the sale of the property? Those are my questions. And that wraps up for today, John.
That's it?
That's it, buddy.
Okay, don't go away.
I won't, I won't.
Let's see how much we can cover, I'll do as quickly as I can, but I don't want to waste my space. All right, let's start, I think we're back up from the question from, I'm not sure what the day is, but the question for the May 26 meeting possibly? Anton, I think you indicated that you would provide a list of the documents that were forwarded to the District Attorney in regard to Mr. Ritt's claims, to the, Mr. Ritt's allegations to District Attorney about the Town of Voice Debate. And I guess the first question is, can you provide the documents to Mr. Ritt or, I'll let you answer the question.
We were prepared to do that last meeting, but, Mr. Ritt, you weren't here.
You can mail some to me. I'm sorry, you're right, I apologize.
Let him go, we'll never get the whole story, that's right.
The letters that were, the documents that were attached to the letter to District Attorney were Mr. Ritt's letters of November 13th, 2014, November 14th, 2014, October 31st, 2014, November 3rd, 2014, February 9th, 2015, February 10th, 2015, and February 12th, 2015.
Okay.
Those are the documents, they're all Mr. Ritt's own letters. If you'd like copies of them back, we can provide them, but they were his own letters. That's what was attached.
So, he doesn't have to dig them out, let him have copies of them.
No problem.
Did you do that today? Get that out of the way?
No problem.
Okay. If you have it handy right now, we'll do it right now.
I have it set out, it's my only cell, I'll get a copy again.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
All right. One of the things, Robert, that I just want to, by way of reinforcing, a councilwoman less who cares to speak out a letter, but if you recall, I think it was back on May 26, she made a rather telling, in my opinion, comprehensive statement as to the state of affairs between yourself and the Town of Voice Debate. And I think she made it abundantly clear, and I certainly, in case it isn't, I'll reinforce it. Many of the things that you are seeking, I'm not talking about information requests, but many of the things that you are seeking are really not within the province of the town. For example, as the councilwoman indicated, I don't know, four judges, maybe you can refresh my memory, Rebecca, with how many, how many entities involved?
Four, three, four judges and the jury, the jury members of Nassau County, the DA's office, the 10th Judicial District, the DOT.
All right, but you-
I know, there were extensive decisions made, right.
You've appealed or contacted, and now you can add, I think, to the State Board of Elections, I think, to that list. But you've appealed to all these other organizations to, I guess, accomplish the things you're trying to accomplish, even the Town of Voice Debate. A number of them have rebuffed you, but using the Board of Elections instance today as an example, let, you kind of made a complaint to the State Board of Elections, all right? Oh, yes, okay, let them do their job. You come up here demanding, you give that money back, you do this, you do that. You made a complaint to the State Board of Elections, I'm sure they're very good, much like the District Attorney and the DOT and certainly the Supreme Court bench and the District Court bench.
Let's hope not.
The 10th Judicial District and the jury of your peers. I'm sure they're all very, very good at what they do. So, rather than come up here demanding, give the money back and this, that's illegal, that's illegal, let's let the Board of Elections do their job, investigate the complaints, and they will then direct us as to what to do. This Town Board, we don't even, we don't have the wherewithal to make those decisions. So, that's, that's why you have that process. So, let's be patient, let's let the, let's let the Town Board of Ethics do their job, let's let the Nassau County District Attorney continue to do their job, let's let the New York State Board of Elections now do their job and what else, who am I leaving out? Whatever else is pending, whatever remedies you are seeking or whatever results you're looking to bring about, whether it's return money, whether it's adjudication of finding that something is proper or improper, let, let these various entities that you complain to, let them do their job and we'll find out. We've already gotten a significant number of them, certainly we've heard from the courts, both district and city. We heard one time from the District Attorney, I don't know, Department of Transportation. And I know you're not happy with the answers they gave, but they heard your complaint, they gave it a fair hearing out, they made findings, and we live by them. Now, we have several more pending out. So, let's follow, let's follow the process. Rather than come up here and argue about what they should do, let's let them do their job and see where they-
You know, John, I think that's-
Oh, no, you gotta, let me finish.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished, go ahead.
On the Clean Street Task Force, I guess I'm going to have to go, I don't even know if I can reconstruct this much. My recollection with, if your answer, I think it may lie in your county, I believe the county administration at the time, I'm not even sure what year it was, but I believe the county administration at the time called together an array of individuals in their representative capacity, certainly mine as supervisors of the Town of Voice Debate, to participate in the, I would call it the vision process. And everybody in the room was chock full of ideas, renderings, and plans and things we'd like to do. I don't recall anything beyond that. It was a meeting that was held and the next thing I know, it went off in a, in another direction, there was a referendum with this along and the Coliseum and the islanders and all that stuff. So, I mean, I'll put together as much as I can, but I'm not aware that any formal minutes were taken or, I don't know that, I don't know if we ever met again after that, and I don't, I don't believe that anything came of it, other than, I don't want to say a Thorpe Show, which is not even wasted our time, but it was, it was kind of like a get together and anybody have any ideas, what should we do about the hub? And there were proposals discussed, our number of renderings were submitted, but I can tell you that nothing ever came of it. I'll try to give you a better reconstruction than that if I can, but for the moment, that's-
That's pretty good, that's a good answer. I'm fine with that.
I got to tell you, Rob, in all the time you've been coming here, all the dialogue we've had, and maybe we have different perceptions, but I don't remember either one of us, not you nor me, ever berating or attacking the other person. We have, our dialogue has been nothing but cordial in the manner in which we've addressed each other, and that includes the time, the times we were alone together down in Massapequa, and it includes all the times you were up here, and you know, you're thanking me and slaying for berating you and attacking you, but I have no recollection of ever done anything that even remotely resembles berating or attacking you. If you regard difference of opinion as berating and attacking, I don't agree, but I really, I really don't recall. You're going to have to, you know, show me that one, because I don't ever remember berating or attacking. The only other thing is, I do know Rich Porcelli Senior, my goodness, I've known him for, I guess, over 40 years now. He does not work for the town, work for the town or derive any benefits from the town of any kind or nature, salary or otherwise. His son, Rich Junior, is a, I don't know his position, but he does work in the Department of Public Works. And as far as the Syossett landfill is concerned, I'm going to need a lot of help with that, but not now.
Yeah.
I, I, I'll let you, I have something, can you answer those questions? No, I can't.
Robert. Just a couple of quick hits of good-
Well, but if we're not going to do it comprehensively, let's do it not, well, I'd rather do it the right way, so he gets everything he needs and we don't do it piecemeal and then say, "Oh, whoops, last time I wanted to correct this." Let's do it the right way. I think that's about all I can do at the moment.
I, just in closing, there's just a couple of things I just had to point out to you.
I mean, do you feel I haven't berated or attacked you, really?
I'll, I'll send you what I'm talking about. If you release your email, I can send you the information.
Have you berated, have you called you foul names and?
No, no, I'll explain to you.
Okay.
Okay. And, and John, just, it's not you personally, it's members of the board, I mean, but-
No, but you seem to be berating.
But in any case, I'll, I'll get it. But what I wanted to just bring up, you just mentioned that you know, you know that I'm disappointed or how I feel about the results of these investigations. I just had to point out to you, John, as you pointed out to me a number of times, you don't know how I feel, you don't know what I'm thinking about that stuff. And what I really perceive as being a problem here is that, at least from my point of view, I get the, I get the impression that everybody here views me as some big bag ogre that's trying to just make the Town of Voice Debate look terrible. All right, quite frankly, I'm only, I'm only up here bringing information that I think needs to be brought to your attention. You're our local government, our elected leaders. I don't, I'm not demanding anybody do anything, okay? I can't, I don't run the Town of Voice Debate, John Vendetto runs the Town of Voice Debate.
Well, that's not-
Okay, well, you're the supervisor of the Town of Voice Debate.
I'm the CEO.
Okay. So, I can't make you guys do anything. I'm not up here to make you do anything, I don't, as disheartening as it sounds, I don't expect you to do anything, but, but I have to bring it to your attention. And thank you.
That's fine, and the only thing I would say in response to that, and I don't know if this directed response, but, Robert, I can only tell you, I do, speaking only for myself, although I feel this way about my colleagues, it's not, it's not an easy job. You are a former police officer and I'm sure you, it was probably a job that I couldn't do very well, and I'm sure it was a difficult job for you, just like pretty much everybody else.
I don't think I could do your job, John.
No, and what I think, what I'm trying to say to you is, I do try to look at the world from the perspective of the residents who reach out to me. Sometimes I get it, sometimes I don't, but one thing about myself, and I think that's true of the other electeds in the town, we try our best. We're not perfect. We, I, I've made many mistakes over the years, and I wish I could go back and, you know, exercise, hindsight is wonderful, but we do the best we can, and sometimes it shakes outright and sometimes it doesn't work outright. But I, the only thing that distressed me today is when the comment about berating and attacking, because that, that kind of smacked of-
I don't really think this is the forum taking into it now, but-
Smack of something personal, and I don't, I don't feel anything, any personal animosity towards you to the point where I would berate you. I, I've always enjoyed talking to you, I've always thought it's been very, very respectful. I can't seem to edit through your, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say thick spell that one.
It's a draw.
But I, I can't take, I don't think the things you're looking to accomplish, whether it's for yourself in terms of the legal morass that you've been through in the Town of Voice Debate, or some of these other issues that you're raising, I don't know that the answer, I don't think the answer lies here with the Town Board. It may lie with some of those other outside agencies that you've been to. I urge you to keep going to them, let them do their job. Certainly, if they find something wrong, I need to know about it, because I need to correct it. But to date, we haven't seen that- But to date, we haven't seen that, we have a new array of, a new round, so to speak, of complaints that were made, let's, let's see how they turn out, and if they deem that adjustments need to be made in the town, we'll still go into it.
Listen, I understand your position, but you have to understand from my point of view that it's important to me that you know about it, so one of these days, if somebody does contact you, you won't have to say, well, I don't know anything about it. Thank you, man. Have a great day.
You too. Paul Molinarri.
Oh.
Paul Molinarri, wait, Paul.